I am a member of the Board of the Republican Liberty Caucus here in Lake County. And on behalf of the Board and our fine members, I would like to welcome you to the Lake County School Board Candidate Forum sponsored by the Republican Liberty Caucus of Lake Sumter. We will begin tonight's forum the same way we begin each of our meetings, and that is by asking the blessing of God upon our time together and reciting the pledge of allegiance to our great republic. We have asked one of our members, Chuck Benoit, to come and lead us. Please stand. And thanks to all of you for coming out tonight and taking the time to inform yourselves about this upcoming election. We would like to give this opportunity to allow any elected officials who are attending this evening to introduce yourselves. So if you are currently an elected official other than on our candidate board here, please stand and give us your name and your elected office. We'll start here.
Sue Luthur, Northlake Hospital District.
Thank you. Can you speak up so everyone can hear you? That was Sue Luthur, Lake, Os- Northlake Hospital District.
Northlake Hospital.
Barbara.
Barbara Price, Northlake County Hospital District, seat two.
Walter Price, I'm the Vice Mayor of Taveras, and I'm also the Chairman of the Republican Party here at Lake County.
Bill Mathias, Lake County School Board, District One.
I'm Mark Dodd, Lake County School Board, District Three.
Pat Kelly, the City Mini Law.
Anyone else missing? All right. We would also like to recognize any Republican candidates for office or their campaign representatives that are with us as well. Please keep your introduction to your name and the office for which you were a candidate, or your name and the campaign which you represent. I know this is asking nearly the impossible. Let's do that, please.
You go first?
Yeah.
Barbara Price, Northlake County Hospital, District Seat Two, candidate.
Alan Reisman, Leesburg City Commission.
My name is Chris Norcott, I'm a political director for Moral Lumber, who is running in the US House of Representatives, District Eleven.
Danny Cage, I'm running for Claremont City Council, Seat Three, otherwise known as Mayor.
Matt Silvernagle, I'm running for Florida House, District Twenty-Five.
Matt has been endorsed by our Republican Liberty Caucus of Florida. All right, thank you. Thank you for all, especially the candidates that introduced yourselves, for being here tonight. That says a lot about your campaign, we appreciate it. As I stated earlier, the Republican Liberty Caucus, Lake Sumter, is sponsoring our forum tonight. For those who may not be familiar with us, please allow me to introduce you to our organization. We are the local chapter of the National Republican Liberty Caucus and RLC of Florida, a voluntary grassroots membership organization dedicated to working within the Republican Party to advance the principles of individual rights, limited government, and free markets. Founded in 1991, it is the oldest continuously operating organization within the liberty Republican movement. Our mission is to return the Republican Party to its ideological roots of limited government, free enterprise, and personal liberty and responsibility. If you are a Republican and you would like to help us accomplish our mission, we encourage you to speak with one of our representatives in the back following the forum to get information about our meetings, times, and locations. Even though the office for which each of these candidates are running is legally a nonpartisan office, we believe that each seat on our Lake County School Board being occupied by a Republican who adheres to the principles enumerated in our Constitution and Bill of Rights, the principles which this organization promotes is just as important as any other office in the land. With that said, we are very grateful for the participation of each of these registered Republicans running for the nonpartisan office of Lake County School Board member. So you know, this is not their first interaction with us as an organization. Each of them, each of these candidates this evening have signed and submitted both our RLC Liberty Compact and an extensive questionnaire which we provided, and we're grateful to them for doing so. I would like to read our Liberty Compact so you know what they signed. "I pledge to the citizens of this state and to the American people that as their elected representative, I will work to restore liberty, not restrict it; shrink government, not expand it; reduce taxes, not base them; abolish programs, not create them; promote the freedom and independence of citizens, not the interference of government in their lives; and observe the limited enumerated powers of our Constitution, not ignore them." Period. And then each of them signed their name to that. And again, we are grateful for that. Now, here are the rules for tonight's forum, and we are going to be a little bit formal tonight. You know, different people have different ideas about how to do these things. We chose to go with more of a formal program, but we are going to be asking a lot of audience questions, and then after the meeting, I'm assuming the candidates are willing to talk with members of the public and take any direct personal questions you may have for them. So here are the rules. For the purpose of time in the forum, we will not be permitting direct questions or comments from the audience, other than a selection of those submitted prior to the beginning of the program this evening. All questions will be directed to the candidates from the moderator. Ma. Okay? The candidates will be given ninety seconds with which to provide their answer to a question. Ninety seconds. By the way, just so you know, none of the candidates, there's only two or three people in this room that have even seen the questions that are going to be asked tonight. So nobody's had access to, you can feel for them, no, no. I wouldn't care. Because they're gonna, it's gonna be uncomfortable, I imagine. I know I would be, so. My plan is to alternate between questions from myself and those submitted by the audience prior to our starting. If you do not hear the question you submitted, or something similar, as I said, please feel free to talk with the candidates afterward. And please do not interrupt during the meeting with comments or overly exuberant responses to answers. We want to be polite and not make them overly uncomfortable. Although, nothing wrong with that necessarily. Okay? So then we will allow two minutes each for an introduction, and then at the, after the questioning period, you will be allowed two more minutes each for concluding remarks. We will not be allowing, say for example, someone in their answer to a question mentions you by name, or alludes to you in some way that you know they're talking about you, we're not going to allow you extra time to respond. However, you are free to respond in your next answer, or to use your concluding remarks, or if it's after someone else's introduction, you feel free to use that time to respond. Okay? So, to review, two minutes for introduction, ninety seconds to answer questions, and two minutes for conclusion. Candidates will, I already said that. We are very grateful to Jan Smith, one of our members, who acted at the time here. If you don't know Jan, she's very mean. She will be asking you if you go too far every time. And everybody knows I'm kidding.
This will start at two, green, and then thirty seconds it will turn yellow, which is our warning, which are also flashing pink, little sonic arrows, so you know, and a little red when you're, you know.
And if you do go more than five seconds over, there's a trap door under the YouTube chat. All right. And as I said earlier, I ask the audience to please be considerate of our candidates and other audience members by not interrupting and refraining from any overt displays of pleasure or displeasure with their answers. Please forgive our formality, but we want this to be fair to our candidates and to everyone, and to everyone given their time this evening. We can have some fun after. All right. Candidates ready? All right, let's begin with our introductions. Ms. Luke, since you're the closest to me, I'll allow you to begin.
Good evening. I'd first like to thank you guys for being here. I'm waiting for her to press start. She hasn't pressed start yet, so I will start. Technology. This is what it's like when an administrator goes into your classroom. I'm just telling you guys, it always happens. All right. I'm Stephanie Luebeck, the current Chairman of the School Board. I sit on the, in the District Five seat, which is representation from Houston, New Orleans area. I have served two terms on the school board. This will be my third term, being elected, if the voters still choose to do that. I will just speak briefly on three things that I'm probably the most proud of, and I can share. I have collective board members in the audience, so as a board, over the last eight years, we have not taken on any debt. We have not borrowed money to build schools or to repair schools. We have done that as a pay-as-you-go model, which has allowed us to reduce the debt from over four hundred and thirty million dollars when I first came into office in 2012, to less than a hundred and sixty million remaining. It equates to about thirty-five million dollars annually when we started, to about nineteen million dollars annually now. And what that does is it frees up money in our capital fund, so that we are able to fix schools, so that we are able to better prepare them for our students. We have recently added athletic fields to our five-year plan. That was something that we kind of was hit or miss, when we could afford to fix them, or when we had a terrible issue, we could maintain them, but it wasn't something that we planned for. We've included play route equipment, we've included science labs, there's a lot of things that we get to cover now because we have a healthy fund, because of the debt reduction. We have fourteen percent in our fund balance. When we started, when I started on the board, it was two and a half percent, so we have increased that balance. Oh, good grief, I have to talk much faster. We have increased that balance to a healthy fund balance, and our insurance balance is also very healthy now. So that's probably the number one thing, that this board has been financially responsible with the taxpayer dollars. In addition, we have increased our CTE, which is our career tech education programs, and our acceleration opportunities, and we've also provided additional opportunities for students who need credit recovery. I will save the rest of this for my closer, because I have four seconds left, but I talk really fast, so I'm about, these are being videotaped. Thank you.
All right. I hope I don't take two minutes. I'm Jim Miller. I was on the board before. It was a different time, it was very frustrating, it was physically sound, didn't have anybody, we had a lot of debt, and then I lost by a hundred and thirty votes. Now I'm back, trying to get, it's gonna be a lot more fun, physically sound, we have a great board, a great superintendent, I'd like to be part of that. If you, if you all, I think you have one of my flyers, if you look through them, I have a lot of experience with helping kids. Kids are our future. They're our country's future. Their future is our future. So I want to make sure that we do as best we can by them to be successful and be citizens.
Good evening. I'm Louis Lopez. Are we ready? I have extra time. The protection of our nation's freedoms begin in education. I am running for school board to be a watchman for the student from the wrong indoctrination that tends to go against our family values and the liberty of our nation. I oppose pre-regard race theory. As American Puerto Rican native, I will not allow a theory to put the three races in me to debate who is best. My over thirty years of international community leadership experience, branding from Puerto Rico to Japan, to Latin American, to USA, and also Canada, can be an asset to the school board. Between my roles as a pastor in shop, former military spouse, former early childhood teacher, and a successful mother of two professional daughters who have attended Florida Public School, I believe that I have what it takes for this office. My experience as a nonprofit administrator can also benefit the school board budget. We pastor can do much with little. This race is not about popularity or reform racing contest, it's about the destiny of our nation at the hands of today's students.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tyler Brandenburg, and I am running for Lake County School Board District Two, which is Leesburg, Lady Lake, Frickle Park. I am a lifelong Lake County resident and graduate of Lake County Public Schools. Of three of the eight schools in my district that I would represent, I did attend to graduate from. After Lake County Public Schools, I went on to University of Florida, got my degree in finance in 2017, and returned home to work for Brown and Brown Insurance in Leesburg, specializing primary and property liability and workers' compensation insurance. In 2020, I was elected to serve in the Lake County Water Authority, and served on that board until earlier this month, June third to be exact, when the governor appointed me to fill a vacancy on the Lake County School Board. So I've been in office for about two weeks now, learned a lot in a couple of weeks, and getting up to speed. We've got a great board superintendent, they're doing some wonderful things, and looking forward the opportunity to serve in the interim, and try to earn your vote to keep it moving forward. So why am I running? I'm running because Lake County gave me every opportunity to be successful growing up, and just looking to make sure that the next generation has the same opportunity to excel. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and look forward to your questions.
All right. First question from the moderator. This is related to academics. I'll give them a second to think about the question after I read it, and we'll say when they're ready. Okay? Here's the question. Do you support schools giving primary emphasis to teaching basic skills, that is, reading, grammar, spelling, traditional arithmetic, history, the arts and sciences, rather than social or political activism or psychological matters, and why? Jim will be starting, and I'll repeat the question to give you another second to think about it. Do you support schools giving primary emphasis to teaching basic skills, that is, reading, grammar, spelling, traditional arithmetic, history, the arts and sciences, rather than social or political activism or psychological matters, and why? Please stand by, we are experiencing technical difficulties. Mr. Miller will be beginning this session. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks to Barbara Price, she sent me availability of a six-week course from Heritage Foundation, which I completed. I already knew about CRT, but I didn't understand about the standard ideology and the things that are going on. It was very well done, but I did do good things, and certainly in agreement with all that. Our kids really need to learn the basics, and that's where they find out what they want to do, and is it science, or whatever, music, whatever the thing, and we need to give them the tools they need to live a successful life. And whatever it is, their talent's hard, and we need to bring that up. All the other stuff is a mess. So, and we're doing it. I mean, our, our, our team is very focused on all those issues. Everything I've heard and I would teach you.
All right. There's all hands?
Yes, I do. That's part of my platform, a teacher's role and reinforcement, and it's also curriculum transparency from the government, the Santis. And I do, teachers are to equip the student with skill and not to indoctrinate their minds with ideologies. Skill are reading, writing, mathematics, arts, sports, and music, among others. Sexual ideologies, gender ideologies, pre-regard race theory is not a skill. There's a reason why they are called theories or ideologies.
Okay, Mr. Brandenburg?
I'll keep this one brief. Yes, I agree with everything you said there unequivocally. We're fortunate to have a great government in the state of Florida that has pushed a lot of these things from Tallahassee. Fortunately or unfortunately, a lot of curriculum is handled at the state level. We follow very specific state statutes, have state-of-the-art curriculum to avoid things like this from happening in our schools. So I fully support those initiatives, and there's no better way to sum it up than education, not indoctrination. Thank you.
Okay. And this is why I don't like to go last, I was like, who gets to go first? Because I think that Florida is very blessed by the governor that we have, and the information he's put forward in regards to specific curriculum and guidelines in regards to what we can and can't say in our elementary schools, but I can tell you from a teacher's point of view, that we have, we have tons of seniors and very little time to teach. And so, all of the teachers in Lake County schools that I've had the privilege of being in their classroom, or having my own children in their classroom, are very focused on what we need students to know and be able to do that are related to basic, basic subjects versus applied application, as has been spoken about. Thank you.
Now we'll address an audience question to our candidates. This one is, was submitted this evening, and here's the question. Under the Florida Education Finance Plan, Lake County is currently sixty-four of sixty-seven counties and per student funding. How would you address this? This question will begin with Ms. Lopez.
Sure. Just for also of my platform, audit the air force. We need to audit the air force, where's the money's going, where investing the money? And it's getting down. The money's using, it's being used for what was sent, and why we're sixty-four, we need to shake back. Why we're sixty-four, if right now we are in a growth community of, last year it was two point sixty-eight growth in Lake County. We are the seventy largest county in Florida, and there's no excuse why we have not moved forward in getting more funding for our students. We will look into it, and where is the money's going, why we are not receiving enough funding, and that's part of my platform.
Yeah, so we are the nineteenth Florida school district in the state based on student population, and by last count, sixty-fourth out of sixty-seven in funding per student. That's absolutely correct. I think Mr. Mathias has done a fantastic job over the last decade, championing for this cause. I've seen many spreadsheets that are as long as this table, to show how that formula tends to work, and where we, where we tend to do well, and where we tend to do not so well. Had about a two-hour meeting with the CFO of the school district the other week, and he really shed some light on this process for me. The biggest area where we're losing at this point is what's known as the district cost differential, or DCD, which takes cost of living into consideration at the county level. And pretty much where we are, we are too big to qualify for the smaller county subsidies, yet not as powerful as the Orange Counties, the Miamis of the world, to get the other funding. So where we're going to continue to work on these things is in our tax base, trying to continue to grow industry and get our tax rolls up in the county, continue to understand ways in which we can improve our standing in that formula. A lot of the categories are restricted funds, so those are intended for very restricted things, but the base student allocation of the DCD is where we can make the biggest difference. We are currently at a point nine eight oh seven DCD ratio, which equates to about six point six million in annual funding that we're losing out on year over year. So little things can be done to improve this process. Good work has been done, we just need to continue what we're doing to get back where we need to be.
And I can add to that, some of the things that we have done, we are currently sixty-fifth, actually, out of sixty-seven in funding, just with the newest update to our, our budget and the FDIP, the Ford Finance Program for Students, but we have, we have fought and received compression funding for the last three out of four years, to the tune of about three million dollars that fluctuates. So that's trying to make up for the over six million dollars annually that we missed out on. It's something, it's not everything, but it's certainly something. We are definitely in violation of Florida statute, which requires that capable funding for our students. The second thing I can tell you that will help improve this is if we continue to improve our schools. And so one thing that I can tell you I am most proud of in this district, and I know our superintendent would join me in this, is that we have increased our graduation rate to over ninety percent. And so when we can advertise that over ninety percent of our students are graduating from high school, we attract businesses and we grow our economy, and so that's one way, you know, I hear a lot that, you know, I don't have children in school, or schools aren't necessarily important to me, because I'm past that stage, but I will tell you that the most impactful thing we can do for Lake County is make it attractive, because our schools are amazing places for their kids to be, and that's what grows industry, so they definitely go hand in hand. The other thing I can tell you is just the community awareness, and so Leadership Lake always is very good about having education days. leadership Lake always is very good about having education days. And anytime we can get in front of a group of people such as yourselves and tell them, we are 65th out of 67 in funding and we want great schools, it seems that the advocacy can grow. And that's exactly what we need to really make an impactful change in Tallahassee advocacy.
This is what happens when you go forth on these questions. I think you see this as a trend because I don't like too many issues we're working on anything. I think we're all pretty much agree on almost all these issues. I think that's good though. This group is focused in the right direction. And I think with our governor, it's just a great place to live in Lake County, Florida, the governor that we got. You look at, I say like New York or something, kids have them in school for a year and a half. We only have for half a semester. And because they're running around and stuff, they aren't quite as disciplined at the end of school. And it's a challenge to get back up to speed, back into the thing. And that's the thing I can get from teachers, all the discipline problems. Kids have just kind of gotten worse, not better because of COVID. It's been a real challenge. Just thinking how bad it is elsewhere where they don't even get in school at all. And yes, we need to be around in 65.
Thank you.
We are doing our best to do it back. Right, Bill?
All right, our next question, moderator question. Here we go. Do you oppose school-based health clinics which may perform examinations, provide immunizations and medications, and dispense birth control devices and abortion referrals without parental consent or knowledge? Please expand on your answer. And this question will begin with Tyler Brandenburg.
So no, again, the governor's office has made it very clear in state statute what we can and what we cannot do. And moving forward into the 2022 school year, no medical services of any kind can be provided to any students without parental consent. I fully support parents being involved and able to make those decisions on behalf of their students. I think it's important that we have certain services available at the school level, obviously safety and overall wound care, but then beyond that, mental health, psychological needs, whatever that might be, with proper parental consent, all for it.
Okay, I'm going to put her on the spot for a second, but Jensen, will you stand up? This is my 16-year-old daughter. I'm a mom. And that's what I'm going to tell you guys. I think that, again, we're going to, I think Governor Stanis is going to get a lot of credit here this evening, the protection that he's put in place. But I can tell you that if there weren't such protections in place, that that is who I fight for. And the decisions that I make come back to her and her brother and her sister. So as a mom, I can tell you that I would never be in favor of anyone giving any of those things to her.
Well, I don't have any kids to stand up, but I do coach a lot of kids. And I do mentor a kid every week at least for five. So I do am involved, even though I'm 73. But yes. Oh, no, no, we're not going to have all that stuff dispensed. We can't. I'm sure there's all kinds of liability if we're trying to do this stuff. But it's just, I'm not going to have a Lake County, Florida, just as, or in the state of Florida. We're in a really good spot in a really good state. I'm glad to be here.
The school should not make decisions on my children's behalf. If they're my children, they're my children's. Parenters are legally and morally bound to their children's well-being. We hold the information from parental oligarch guardians put in jeopardy the wellness of a child. So I will not support a clinic taking decision on my children's.
Thank you. Our next question comes from the audience. There were three kind of similar questions. I hope it's not too much to deal with in one question, but I'm going to try to combine these three questions. Hopefully you'll be able to handle it. So here's the first. The school superintendent, Governor DeSantis, and this brings up something I wanted to make sure we, and I speak for myself in the eyes, I believe, we want to know your philosophy. So we know Governor DeSantis' philosophy. So please make sure that you share what you believe and what your philosophy is, even if there were the socialist Democrat government, governor that we almost had. So please keep that in mind for us. So the school superintendent, Governor DeSantis, have prohibited CRT in classrooms. How will you ensure that road teachers will not insert progressive CRT, Project 1619, so on and so forth, class curriculums, assignments, tests, or video shows for students? Because we are aware that there are some liberties and freedoms for them to insert other information that they, if they define that, I didn't understand it correctly. Similar question, do you support, some might disagree, but do you support transgender women participating in women's girls' sports? And how will you address sex education from K through 12? These are social issues is why I'm saying there are several, although I realize they can vary a lot. But this will begin with Ms. Luke.
Oh, I lost my train of thought. You hit an nerve and I know I only have 90 seconds, so I'll say this fast. She's, I'm so glad she's here tonight. This is my first campaign. She's really been old enough to participate, but she, this is funny. She was on the state championship softball team for East Coast High School last year. She has the state ring. And so that's my mom heart, I will tell you. But she, she's 5'2" and she doesn't weigh very much and she bats in the forehole. And I will never, ever ask her to stand next to a man and try to compete with that. And so again, apart from Governor DeSantis and everything that he's done nationally to be recognized for his support, I think that is another area that I would fight regardless of what state I lived in because I have two daughters who are amazing athletes and they were born with gifted talents that are nothing like a man's. And that was by design. The second thing I will say is we have a great process in Lake County right now. I do believe that when issues arise, first of all, similar to when my kids come home and tell me about something, a video in particular that was shown, it is my right as a parent to come in and ask the material is reviewed, if it is found to be anywhere near associated with CRT or the critical, or project, I don't even know what it is. That's terrible because we do not believe in it. Then it is removed immediately and our administrators are aware of that and our teachers are aware of that. Our teacher, I'm going to tell you guys, our teachers are dedicated to teaching the standards in their classroom. And so we have a really good process in place for that. There was another part of that question, but I don't remember where it is, but I may be able to tell you. Okay.
Personally, I do agree with Governor DeSantis. I'm sorry not to agree with him on all that standard. I read House Bill 1557 and there's anything wrong with that at all. Spark a sex ed. We do, I think, have it in middle school. Parents should, but not all parents do, and not all kids have parents. So if you don't tell them about it, they're going to get pregnant because nobody told them not to or anything else. We have to have something there. I think parents should be able to, and parents who do it right, do it the right way, can help their kids out, no problem. But if you, it's not run wild. I know more kids, you know, they don't want to. But anyway, I absolutely agree with what we're doing. We had a road teacher, it wouldn't last long, is my impression from what I've heard. And there's been a few instances where it really wasn't, but my dad and it's going to go away. So I don't know if we're all three of them, I think I touched base on it, but. Oh, yes. Oh, I just heard something. I think the NCAA said that they will not allow transgender to compete unless they're transgendered before the age of 12. In fact, you can't use an 18-year-old guy to compete, but if they're transgendered, I couldn't believe it because on ESPN I heard Alyssa Ball's voice herself.
And a pastor. We must stand as a caregiver of our children, but above all caregivers of their soul. If we don't stand as a caregiver of the soul, we're going to lose the role of a nation. We must stand, we cannot stay no more silent. Biology has made a difference between a lion and lioness. They call it the king of the jungle, the male, and the female lioness. Biology already made a distinction between one and other. What I'm trying to tell you is that we, the biology science, already accepted the difference between one and the other because of the sex that they carry. We must understand that we cannot allow that in our classroom.
I took notes just in case I forgot one part, so I think I'll hit all three of them. I spoke with the superintendent this morning on the CRT issue just to make sure I understood where the district stood at this point. And I agree lock and set with the superintendent and the governor for that matter. But she shared with me unequivocally that we have a policy that CRT will not be taught in our classrooms and that no student should ever know their teacher's political affiliation or beliefs. Easier said than done, but the policy has been set at the top and the top isn't forcing that policy. I think the best way to know what's going on is like Ms. Luke mentioned, what the students bring home and what they say goes on in their classrooms. And when you hear that happening, you can then intervene if you've got an issue and then get to the bottom of it. That's that. Step two, transgenders in sports, yeah, that should not be happening at the high school level or any level for that matter. The same with sports, it's an important thing for students to be able to excel and go to the next level. And if we rob students of the opportunity to truly excel here in athletics that could help them get to the next step, that does very poor things long term. And last up, K-12 sexual education. Again, I can't believe we have to have policies on certain things on the K-3 level. I think that's crazy. But beyond that, similar to other comments have been said, at the middle and high school level, I think you need some form of curriculum that is parent proof that parents can choose to opt out of, but absentee parents. We can't legislate people to be parents, but at the same time, we've got to make sure those students have what they need to be successful, move on to the next level. And with the remaining time that I have, the public review policy is starting up now and the parental choice program with library books is starting as well. I'll get into that later.
So there will be answer to that question. I'll take a moment to editorialize a little bit. This, you know, you can tell from their answers, I think, the importance of us as parents and grandparents being aware of what our kids and grandkids are being taught and being closely watching the materials that are in home or don't bring home, having that open communication and then reaching out to these officials and letting them know when there's something alarming to you. Okay, next question. This is a moderator question. Kind of a little bit in the similar vein. Do you support the fundamental right of parents to direct the upbringing and education of their children? If yes, as a Lake County School Board member, would you be supportive of charter schools and homeschool parents as well? And how would you show your support? And this session will begin with Mr. Miller.
I actually, before I turn schools, going for charter schools, we'd be really overcrowded right now. We have a lot of good charter schools in Lake County. And if you had gone away, but for the most part, especially in South Lake. It's interesting, the only one to build where it's really crowded. That's where we wanted to build, so it works out pretty well. We are building our own now and we're pretty excited the schools are building. Always the under.
If you're supportive, how would you show your support?
People who homeschool, yes, they should be supported. Parents, we have parents who want to take that on. By all means, that's what we're looking for. Our problems, we can do once if you don't want to have any of those. Those are the ones that I hear about from the teachers who retired early. Just yesterday, all these, she said, parents are involved in it. It's really frustrating. We can't teach a kid. Some of them, anyway, it's very difficult to be a teacher because of that. So yes, those who are interested should be able to make all the decisions. I did as a parent.
I do support, as part of my platform, school choice. We need to stop putting boundaries in student progress. We must allow the parents for the well-being of the teacher, of the students, where the kids feel according to the, what they have, according to how the research is, according to the parent research, and they think that a school is not appropriate for the teacher, for the student, or for whatever is the reason, give a parent the opportunity to pick the right school for the well-being of the student.
Yes, similar to Ms. Lopez's comments, I think school choice is incredibly important. I think adding competition to our schools only makes us all better. Iron sharpens iron. And when you've got more providers in the area, it naturally only forces you to step up your game to make sure you're doing what you need to do for your students. So how would I support that? I would look into charter school opportunities when the district can adequately meet the needs and demand. I think it's no secret that we have a lot of growth coming to Lake County, not just in South Lake anymore, but more in North Lake County with Whispering Hills and Hodger Reserve in the Leesburg area and then with everything that's happening in the Wolf Branch area in Eldora. A lot of growth is coming. Our capital plan is ready for a lot of it, but not ready for all of it. So if we find areas where we've got increased demand that we can't meet, the only thing that makes sense in my opinion is to look for a well-qualified charter school to come in and help meet that demand and again, help us better our ways as this public school district here in Lake County.
I literally wrote down, however, the competitiveness makes us better. So I will just reiterate that. I will tell you that as a board and by statute, there's actually very little we can control in regards to such charter schools, as long as they're fiscally sound. We pretty much have to approve them. We have been fortunate in Lake County to have partners who have come to us and asked where would be appropriate to build, where do you see overcrowding in your schools? I will, the caveat I will tell you is that they don't have a requirement to remain open. And so I know that when we make decisions about where to place charter schools, in the back of our mind, we always have to keep in mind, what happens if that charter school closes? Where are those kids going to go? And so it is nice to have the partnership and it is nice to be in an agreeable state with charter schools because that isn't the case in a lot of districts throughout the nation, actually. However, we always have, they are our students, right? So whether they go to a charter school or whether they go to a public school, they are Lake County students and it is our job to make sure to give a place for them. And I know our capital plan continues to address those needs as it comes up. I will also just tell you guys that I wish that we were judged the same. And so what unfortunately happens is some of our charter schools don't have the same requirements in regards to accountability and testing that our public schools have. And so we get grades and we get, you know, kind of run through the wringer when our private charter schools don't have the same accountability, not just in testing, but also in their building codes and the amount of money they have to spend to make their buildings adequate for children. Some of them operate out of our state community college partner buildings. And so when we talk about safety and security, those are always things that are on our minds. But we have been supportive of them, so.
Thank you. Each of you addressed the second question or the second half very clearly. So just for clarification, I just want to get an answer, yes or no. Do you support the fundamental right of parents to direct the upbringing and education of their children? That's kind of a given, but I just wanted to get that out in the public realm, okay? All right. Make sure I didn't skip anything here. Oh, I did, see? All right, audience question. I like this. Where do you stand on the career and technical education programs? And this will begin with Ms. Lopez.
We do not, we need those vocational schools and to address the technical school because right now. because right now, that is, the media is taking over. We need the new generation to be equipped with the right tools to take care of the new challenges of the nation, because we're captive, we're part of this nation is bringing forth. So I do support technical school, I do vocational school, and I do support funding for this, because I know everybody wanted to go to college. Many people wanted after this, wanted after gathering for school, they really looking to go to a workplace. And we should work to help those students to embrace their dream.
I think our mission statement at the school district, and then I'm going to pick on Leesburg High School in a positive way as well here. So our mission statement is to help students excel with individual opportunities at the next level, whether that be college, career, military, or entrepreneurship, or anything else along that way. Succeed at life at the next level. So I'm a huge proponent of CTE partnerships. College was a good path for me, but that's not the right path for everyone. And given the job market and where we are today, there are so many jobs in high demand that with the growth coming into the county and other places, can make a very lucrative career very quickly and be in it a true career for life. So just to touch on a few partnerships we already have in place. And again, Leesburg Construction Academy had 30 kids about five years ago, and now they've got a waitlist of over 300 kids trying to get to the construction academy. We just completed our third half of that for Humanity House, and continue to do great things in that program. We've recruited a second teacher this year, and continue to grow from that standpoint. Partnerships with Emory Riddle, Ustis High School in South Lake on the aviation side. We're instituting some unmanned drone programs, Leesburg High School, and a few others. In the Leesburg area, we're looking at more partnerships in aviation. We've got Leesburg International Airport. There's a lot of great employers out there that are high demand for aviation mechanics and everything else along those lines that I think we can offer to our students. Lake Tech has been a great partner, Lake Sumter has been a good partner, and becoming an even better partner with some leadership changes over there. So no, I am all in favor of CTE more and more and more. Power Academy, we're trying to bring back Leesburg High School in conjunction with Lake Tech to work in the line of the program, and more opportunities along the way. So yes, CTE all the way.
So I can just expand on what Mr. Brandenburg just said, and I would encourage you guys to grab one of these. I have them with me this evening. I think Mr. Nifly has some of them as well. This is a list of the current CTE programs that we have in all around high schools and middle schools as well. And there are some that are not on this card as well. So the Aviation Academy is one of my favorites, because it took about three years to get it off the ground. And there's no pun intended, that was funny. But it started in a conversation with the city manager in Umatilla, and they have their airport out back as well. And then it has started as a club with volunteer members, and they are actually building an airplane that they plan to sell to then use the dollars to purchase another one so that the students have the ability. And to grow that program, the partnership with Emory Riddle, we now have a program specialist that's dedicated to the aviation programs. Super, super excited about that one. The other two, he mentioned the Construction Academy and Leesburg High School in partnership with the community. So what I can tell you is that we were able to get appropriation dollars in addition to our funding, which is critical for us to grow these CTE programs, which are being 65th out of 67 in funding. The Rowmap, Rowmap Upper Supply got together with the Builders Association, and all of those contractors and builders wrote letters of support for us that we then took to Tallahassee. So they appropriated funds to start these academies. They've done the same for an HVAC program in Umatilla and a construction academy now at Ustis High School as well. And the last thing that you have to give me time to say for, I'm going to take 20 seconds from Jim. Okay. The Sevieras High School Teaching Academy was also something, we have a critical shortage area Jim just spoke about, just teachers in general on burnout. COVID has really done a number on public education in general. So we have, we have, we have the High School Teaching Academy at Sevieras High School. We just recently had a signing day where we have six graduates that plan to go in their teaching academy and come back and work in Lake County schools. Okay.
Yeah, what she said. Again, important, and after her, sorry, she talks so fast. Anyway. Don Marks and I were in the Chamber Alliance when we were setting on the new superintendent. We got to interview Diane Clarky. Because one of her strengths was the CTE program where she came from. And she has doubled down in space, but from what I can see, I'm not on the board, I've been on the board, but it's been a while. But that's what our graduation rate is, increases all the time, that the kids are invested in something they want to do, like construction, or teaching, whatever it is. Those are things that keep kids in school versus dropping out. That's why the graduation rate is high, because we've been through CTE. And as from what I can see, we're keeping more, it's a good formula. Hopefully, there'll be something for every kid who they want to do. And I still, when I didn't make the 32nd one, I still, I try to keep it short. You all appreciate that, right?
Oh, please, I'm sorry. I was going to give you another half a second. All right. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. Brandenburg. And... Here's a question. Do you oppose accepting outside grants from wealthy special interest foundations and from state and federal governments that set the district agenda, such as expanding early childhood education, diversity training, and global citizenship programs?
So I am a fan of grant dollars, bringing them into the county under certain circumstances and when we don't have restrictions in place that go against state statute and other directives that we have at the superintendent level and at the state level. So while I'm always in favor of grant dollars, anything along the diversity training or anything along those lines, if it's more in the indoctrination space instead of the education space, I am not in favor of, no.
I would agree. I believe that's why we have separation from state and federal government. And I can also tell you that we tried that. We didn't try it, but the federal government tried it with Race to the Top and Common Core several years ago. We all know how that went.
Yeah.
Grants are always good, but it's going to affect our government. They can keep it. So I believe in less government. Grant that is going to put us in jeopardy, our local government, we don't need it, thank you.
Another audience question. Make sure I get this correct. Is there anything concerning your professional background that would potentially present a conflict of interest in school board dealings? And we'll begin with Ms. Lopez.
I am currently an associate instructor at the University of Central Florida in the College of Education. That's my real job, I say. So I know there are some opportunities that we have that I have never actually been in conflict, but to be on the, to take it on the side of caution, I would rescind myself from the vote. So just as an example, so that you can see what I'm talking about, we had a dual enrollment agreement on our agenda this past Monday night with the University of Central Florida. And so I escaped from voting, so that there would not be any potential interest by me being in gain, some type of gain from students attending the University of Central Florida. So that's the only background that I have. I am an educator, I do consultant work, I don't do consultant work in Lake County. So that's it.
I'm a commercial realtor, and I did sell some of Lake County school board property. It's right next to the villages, 20 acres that was the egg farm for Leesburg High School, and they got $6 million for it. I didn't get out a commission, I got a commission from the buyers. And it was just a flat deal, it wasn't based on, and it was not what I'm used to getting out of the deal at big. They paid me, they paid full price value, and there was no commission paid by the district, so they got full price for the property. And so I didn't, it's sort of a capital fair, it wasn't. I doubt I'm going to have that situation again, but if I did, I would not take a commission. And I do have some expertise in commercial real estate, so maybe you can help with some of that stuff.
I don't have any as far as I know. I don't know political favors, no, I don't want. I'm running on my own reputation. So far, I don't have no conflict of interest.
As I mentioned earlier, I work for Brown, Brown Insurance in Leesburg. We do have some business dealings with Lake County schools and other local municipalities. I have never made a dollar off the Lake County schools account, I'm not tied to it anyway, but my employer is. So we are very well versed in the refusal process and making sure that I have no influence on any dealings that could directly or indirectly benefit my organization. So there is a conflict, but not one that would be directly just with my employer.
Thank you. We've alluded to this a couple of times, but I'd like to get this out in the public venue also. Do you support a pay-as-you-go philosophy of budgeting? Pay-as-you-go being defined as financing expenditures with funds that are currently available rather than borrowed? And we'll begin with Mr. Miller, please.
I certainly do, that's kind of why we get back on the board, because we're doing that. It's going to be a lot more fun than when we weren't doing that. So yes, I absolutely support that.
I do support that's chosen good stewardship. We are moderating to the students, so we pay as we go.
So yes, I agree with the other two. Like I said earlier, I've got a finance background and a business focus in my quote-unquote day job. So yes, I am always in favor of writing checks that you can cash and making sure that our growth is funded with dollars if we already have. And if we can't fund the growth, again, we've got charter school options, we've got other options that can fill that need, and we can go from there. But the capital improvement plan has worked extremely well. We've done a great job paying down debt, as Ms. Luke alluded to earlier. Our reserve fund is up to 14%, our fund balance. So our CEO has done a fantastic job in moving us in the right direction. So I'd like to keep it that way.
I agree with that model. And since I have a little bit of time, I can tell you that with the new administration, our superintendent has never even brought forward a recommendation for us to borrow any money as well. So she is 100% on board with the direction of the current school board, and it does take the direction of the school board. So it's been, it has been a pleasure to work with my colleagues on the school board, because we all are very aligned in that vision, and it's what makes our capital plan so healthy for the growth that we are getting ready to experience and have experienced over the last eight years.
Thank you. Another audience question. I have a feeling this may be a student's question. Okay? Where do you stand on uniforms?
That for me, when I was a child in Puerto Rico. I don't think uniform is necessary in the school. That brings it to the parents to more spending right now with inflation that we're experiencing. We don't need more burden on the parents. And I do believe, the parents have the right also to exercise the right over the children where they are using uniforms or they're not. So that's my point, yeah.
So I'm not in favor of uniforms at the district level as a district-wide mandate. Our dress code policy, I believe, has been recently updated. I think Ms. Luke can help me on this one if I get off path a little bit. But to where the local schools, administration, and their parent SAC can choose to look at uniforms at these individual school level, but the district will not be included. And trying to do things at the higher level, I think individual freedoms are important, and students' expression and the ability to wear the clothes that they already have, given the times that we're in, is another good point. So no, I'm not interested in the uniforms blanket across the district.
We do have a policy that's very fitting for each unique school's desires, and the SAC committee is your school advisory council, and it's made up of teachers and parents and community stakeholders. And if there is a desire for the school to have school uniforms, that goes through that advisory council. It's very well vetted, it's open to the public to give comment, and then they bring it. They used to bring it before the board. We've updated the policy now that if a school advisory committee follows that protocol, that they can be a uniform school. In the past, the school had to come and request to opt out of one of our policies because they had uniforms. And so we thought, what a tragedy that they've gone through these motions to have a uniform in place, and then they have to come and ask to opt out of the policy. So we've updated that procedure, and it's working very well. It allows our schools to accommodate the needs of their students and their community, and what's important to them. I also will tell you guys just in regards to dress code updates. Another thing that our superintendent has put into place that is one of the things that we're also very proud of is the Student Advisory Council to the Superintendent. So she has put together a group of seniors from each high school that advise her on issues related to students. And so what a great voice to have at the table. We get to hear how the decisions that we're making at the board are impacting our students in a real setting. And they updated our dress code this year to make it more current and to make it more even enforceable, like some clearer definitions. And so we've gotten some positive feedback from our students that are in the school setting from that advisory council to the superintendent.
Yeah, it may have been directed at me, but 10 years ago, I was in school reports. I learned here are my ways, and I think it should be a sideways decision. If a school wants to be like my bird, they can be like my bird. We don't want to do any of that. We do have to maintain the dress code that the kids just came up with. I thought that was a great way to do it. Way to get support, that's a different story, but I like what's being done now. It really should be sideways, I really force sideways decision-making anyways. I acquiesced on that issue.
All right. Due to the number of audience questions that we received, I'm going to switch to all audience questions now, so we can try to address many of these as we can. Please discuss your experience in getting a diverse group of people to a consensus. And a different track. So it'd be Ms. Lopez, I believe.
So can you describe the experience that I have in bringing a diversity of people into a consensus question? Well, as you know, I'm Hispanic. I pastor a multicultural, bilingual church. I do that all the time. I try to be empathetic to the culture and without losing sense of what is the truth. That's why I also stick into my platform, and my platform multicultural approach. It's about, we want people that come to United States to embrace our American culture. But in order for them to embrace our American culture, we need to provide sources, resources for them in transitioning. Transitioning, sometimes it could be a language barrier. Sometimes it could be cultural, the way that they see things. And I have bring a different background of ethnicity into consent in focusing not in our diversity, but in what unites us.
Yeah, so this is a great question, and I appreciate it. One of the main reasons I'm running for the school board is to bring a different perspective to the board. I think it's no secret, no offense, but I'm the youngest one up here by a slight margin, and a different background than what's already on the board necessarily. I think that's really valuable. If we've got five people up there that are all saying the exact same thing and not challenging things in a productive way or getting other input from parents, from stakeholders, from teachers and all alike, we're going to lose sight of what's going on and really miss some opportunities to improve. What experience do I have in doing that? I graduated Leadership Lake County. Lake County is becoming more diverse and going through that program. Exposed me to a lot of different backgrounds, the ability to learn different points of view. Also, just recently graduated from Leadership Florida, so Leadership Lake, but just at the larger level with representatives from all 67 counties. And boy, was that an experience, one that I really valued and wanted a lot from. I also serve on the board, Director's for New Vision for Independence of Lake and Sumter Counties, which is focused on low-vision support services throughout Lake, Sumter, and the villages. So again, another perspective of people than at the other groups. And lastly, I've served on the board for the Leesburg High School Booster Club for the last five years to get more of a parent's input and also an athletics input, and how important those are for our students. So I try to be involved, I try to surround myself with people that don't think exactly the same as I do, because I believe, again, life was the same as I do, because I believe, again, like with school choice, competition only makes us better and to challenge our beliefs and make sure we're looking at things from all fronts.
Okay. So I'm gonna start off by telling you guys that I am a math teacher by trade. And so I work all the time with people that don't like the subject that I teach. I force people to do math. So that's one of the experiences that I've had with that. Obviously, serving on a school board for eight years has brought in some various people. So the two gentlemen that are with us tonight, Mr. Mathias and Mr. Dodd, and I have served together since 2014. We have not always agreed, but we absolutely have respect for one another, the respect to listen and to learn from one another. I've learned things from both of these gentlemen and the passion that they bring to the table. I would say that one of the things that I am most proud of is the cohesive nature of our board. And so one example of that would be the question in regards to pay-as-you-go. I don't think there's a person in Lake County that pays attention to public schools that doesn't know that the desire of the current board is to pay-as-you-go. And so it brings candidates forward with the same philosophy because of the bold nature that the board has had. So there is, again, I do think there's always room for improvement, and I appreciate the discussion that we have in the board, but I think that the unity and the respect that we have for one another has really been the successful, the result of the financial state and the academic state that the district is in today. And it has allowed us to appoint the superintendent that we have as well. So thank you to both of you.
In the mid-'90s, Florida went through, all the counties had a comprehensive plan. Took his two years to do it, we had different elements, including conservation element. I was chair of that group, and we, it was very diverse. We really had three, we had the developers who were for growth, we had ag, which was, at that time, we still had orange trees and stuff. And then we also had the green people. And somehow, you had bring them together. And it was, it was quite a chore. As a real estate broker, it's by nature to bring people together, because I don't, I don't debate. So I'm always trying to find common ground and bring people together. And I thought I did a pretty good job of that, because somehow, we got it together, and we got it passed, and we've been, basically, it hasn't changed since, so we did a pretty good job of that thing. Two, I was on the Naugroft Leadership Lake class. I was having President Leesburg Chamber at the time, so they had to take me there. And I was also being part of the Naugroft Hall of Fame. So I've been around a while, I guess, but I'm still active with kids and community. I deal with parents and deal with high school ages too. So I bring a lot of wisdom, and I get a lot of love.
All right. I'm gonna combine these two. How many years did you spend in the classroom and public education K through 12? And as this focus of election is about Lake County children, what have you done in the past five years to enrich the community for the children, and what are your plans to? So if you don't have education background, answer the other question. Mr. Brandtberg, sir.
So no, I do not have any direct education experience, and I don't say this to be flippant anyway, but I've got 13 years' experience in Lake County Public Schools, and I graduated in 2013, so nine years ago, so still relatively fresh and still involved in our local schools from that standpoint. But what have I done in the last five years? Like I mentioned earlier, I've been on Leesburg High School Booster Club board for the last five years and gotten very deeply involved, again, at my own alma mater, Leesburg High, since principal, Mike Randolph has come in. He's been such a catalyst for supporting our community and really raising the perception of what we're doing in Leesburg and all that we can be. I think it's no secret that the Leesburg area schools are lagging behind our other districts in the county. And if we can get those schools right, we're right there in a district and all the good things that happen there. And uniquely with District Two, we only have one high school. We've got seven other schools, two middle schools, and then five elementary schools, but one high school that everyone follows to in our district. So trying to do everything we can to increase opportunities there to be of utmost importance, because again, it only makes us stronger. So the Leesburg High School Club board there, and then also I've served as the president of Leesburg Lightning for the last seven years, so Collegiate Summer League Baseball at Pat Thomas Stadium. A lot of our kids throughout the county have come through the Lightning over the years and played in the Florida Collegiate Summer League, so getting the opportunity to look at them from an athletic standpoint after K-12, that's been a really rich experience for the community. Thank you.
I am a lifelong educator. I graduated from the University of Central Florida in 2000 and came back and started working at UC Heights Elementary School. I transitioned to a district office position about seven and a half years after serving in the classroom, but that role was to support teachers and their understanding of mathematics and how to teach it to kids. And so I got acquainted with all of our elementary schools, a lot of our teachers, and a lot of our administrators. I moved into a higher administrative role at the district office for about a year. I was in charge of teacher evaluations and principal evaluations. That was fun. And then UCF had an opening at the College of Education. So currently at UCF, I teach elementary teacher candidates how to teach mathematics and how to teach science, and I also coordinate internships, which is their experience that they have in elementary schools prior to graduating and becoming teachers. In addition to that, I am getting my doctorate degree currently, and I can tell you guys that after this summer, I will successfully be a year-two candidate in educational leadership. And so that's been, it's made it a little bit more challenging this year to be a board member and a parent and an instructor. I will also tell you guys that I serve as the parent RZ representative for UC's high school softball team, which just translates to I work the concession stand a lot and I coordinate a lot. But that definitely helps set a vision, and I also have a professional development meeting that we run for recent graduates from the University of Central Florida, Lake County teachers, and I can't talk to anymore.
Well, my dad was a teacher. He was a high school science teacher, retired from that, then got into real estate. I coached. Oh, and my grandmother, I suppose, my grandfather was a teacher. So it's in my blood, so I coached, that's how I feel that need to teach. And I've been doing that for 32 years in soccer, youth soccer, baseball. But I've been involved with the community so much through all the years in so many ways, and I still go to the Florida Chamber to visit back on the 28th, and Sandy Moore, who's the President of Leesburg Chamber, and I went down to the Florida's to Ern's Summit that the Florida Chambers putting on down in, down towards Tampa. And to learn that, what can we do then? Make the situation transition from Florida to Ern's, the Florida Chamber, with the Niss, all the programs. And I was gonna invite Sandy and take her and then turn that, she says, let me check my calendar, and she says, oh, I'm presenting there. Okay, so the program, she started with second graders, and so she's gonna be presenting in the Florida Chamber event. At least I'm offering her a ride, it's my favorite way, she's already going to present, so I'm really proud of what they're doing. I was team president '90 and 2000, but it's really good hands for Sandy Moore. Still connected to all of it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I lost her all this. Always with my girl. Well, my spirit is mostly ministerial. I have the year of international ministry of multicultural, but I also, I have my, I was a BPK T-shirt in Mandora and UC's for three years. I always working with the community, with the children especially, and also I'm the director of Protect Our Children Project in Lake County. We are working around not only Lake County, we're working the state, working with the children's needs. Obviously, Lake County is our priority because this is home, but I'm always looking for the opportunity to impart my life, my time into the children's life.
All right. I've been told that, but we only have one question left from the audience, so I'd like to, if you'll bear with us, we'll get everybody's question included. I'm gonna, I'll give you the exact question, but I'm gonna frame it in a little bit different way. Do you support having a paid police presence on campus and securing the building with one entrance? So they're obviously wanting, do you support having a paid police presence on campus and securing the building with one entrance? That's very specific, but I'd just take a quick moment to address school security.
Yes, I will tell you guys, actually, I was the, there was a two-two split on our vote whenever we were talking about whether or not to enact the Guardian Program. And I was the vote that made the Guardian Program come into place in Lake County Schools alongside my partners that are here. And in regards to one entry rate, I haven't had a chance to think through this, and so I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I do think that, just thinking about the different high schools that we have in campus and the different academies that are in different places, that saying one entrance might limit or prohibit the way that we do things, but I certainly would be interested in, and always interested in making our buildings as secure as possible. So I know that we have, we currently have a policy where every door is locked and everybody has to come through the front entrance and be buzzed into the front entrance. There's several things that we've done that I know, I don't wanna get into the weeds here because we're being videoed and I don't wanna give it all away. So we are 100% in favor and have enacted procedures in Lake County Schools to keep our kids as safe as possible, and I do support that.
You know, especially with what happened in Texas, yes, and I think we're doing a very good job. We passed the S-75 almost three years ago to argue in our schools, the paper, the deputies of paper, mental health counselors, not counselors who just do scheduling, but mental health counselors. And as big as these schools are, our elementary schools are a thousand, close to 1,000 kids, you need at least one mental health counselor for that many kids, not even more, but at least you've got one. You can help once you really need it. I support what they're doing, I support them. Two remaining.
I do support any procedure that keep our kids safe, but I do believe in the Guardian Program that is in place, and I believe that we should expand it to the teachers, that we should expand it to personal, to other personnel in the school as long as they are regulated to the Guardian Program.
I'm glad this one came up. This was gonna be what I talked about in my closing remarks with school safety. So yes, I am all in favor of paid school resource officers on our campuses. I think that has been a worthy addition to not just the middle and high schools, but also the elementary schools with unfortunately what we've seen in school shootings over the last several years. I had the opportunity to be with our school safety and security team in the district a couple weeks ago, and one of the things that was brought up was hardening our campuses and how we can go about that from a practicality standpoint. We all want our students to be safe, we all wanna make sure we've got SROs and Guardians on campuses to do that. But the question that's come up, for example, on no-climb fences at our schools. Sounds fantastic in theory, but as I was sitting there with the school safety team and our Director of Operations, or excuse me, School Operations, Mr. John Carr, he said he got a quote for no-climb fencing, it was $300 a linear foot, and we have 38 miles of fencing in Lake County Schools. So there's a point where we can be protective, and there's a point where it just isn't practical and available for our budget to handle it. So making sure we're doing what we can from that standpoint. Safety is obviously being a one priority, but making sure that we're doing what we need to from the dollars and cents I have at it as well, to make sure what we're doing is effective and also cost-effective. And expanding on that a little bit, I also have the opportunity with our sheriff the other day to talk about school safety and those partnerships, and he did endorse my candidate for the seat. So he is a huge proponent of making sure he's in our schools, and I'm a huge proponent of making sure school resource entities are in all of our campuses to keep our students safe. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to allow the two minutes each for concluding remarks. And maybe if I'm correct, Mr. Miller, that falls to you to start that session.
Well, I'm gonna be brief. Their future is our future. Kids today are the future of our country. They actually are. I feel like this is the most important job there is, because they are our future. You know, we gotta do things right, so there'll be a future for them, but we gotta get them right so they can do what they can, so it turns the curve. I feel like I have a lot of experience and the wisdom to do the job. Way to have that thing to hand out. Thank you. But you see that I, I think I'm very well qualified to do it, and I'm anxious to do it with the board that we have now.
I'm running for Leesburg District Two, but I'm not a city person and a county person. My commitment is to the whole county. My board is all over the county, not only in Leesburg. My six endorsements so far, including Representative Anthony Sabatini, is a seal of my integrity and my character. I am the only one who stood up for parental rights in front of the school board in the middle of the pandemic. Unlike other candidates, I have stood up for students without making a financial profit, nor running because I need a job. I have an accent that is on my tongue and not in my brain. I am the only one here who has presented a platform and not just a resume. My resume is my two daughters, successful daughters that came from Florida public school. My platform of education with an accent emphasizes student readiness for the workplace and values that protect the liberty of our nation. In my effort to be a blessing to our local school, I will also be pledging more than 20% of my annual salary back to the student.
I just wanna start off by thanking you all again for coming tonight. The moderators' questions and the panel, or the, excuse me, the crowd's questions are fantastic. I think we got through a lot of issues, and I think for the most part, we all agreed on many things, which I think is really important, the fact that we've got four quality candidates up here running for these two seats. I'm gonna keep this part brief. What I would say is, like I mentioned earlier, the governor did appoint me to fill a vacancy in this District Two seat a couple weeks ago. I had his trust, and that's something that I take very seriously, and I think that shows in the answers to the questions that I'm, I'm lock-in set with what he's doing and understand how important parental involvement is for our students and our community moving forward. And like I mentioned at the end, I picked up the sheriff's endorsement the other day. So between the governor and the sheriff, I think we've, we've got a good understanding of what we need to do in this county. Keep kids safe, keep parents involved, and keep all the rest out of the system so our kids can learn. Thank you again for the opportunity.
And I get to close, and I'm actually gonna take a minute to be a current board member rather than a candidate. And so you all have entrusted us for the last four years with a three-quarter mileage increase, and that has allowed us to do so many things in regards to safety and security for our, for our children. And so Mr. Brandyberg alerted to the costs associated with hardening our buildings and providing safety measures for our schools, and we couldn't have done a third of what we've been able to accomplish over the last four years without the additional dollars that are associated directly to mental health and school safety and security. And so this is going to be on the ballot along with the four of us, and my, the four of us. And anyway, what I'm asking is that you would consider refunding the three-quarter mileage before you leave tonight. I have a flyer that talks about what we've been able to do, because I certainly couldn't talk about all of it in 90 seconds, but we have been able to put a school nurse into every single campus for Lake County Schools. We have been able to put a mental health liaison on every campus, a school psychologist. We are trying to stop the problem before it even becomes a problem. I was able to visit some of our mental health liaisons on elementary, middle school, and high school campuses over the last year, just in an effort to educate myself on these dollars so that we can be good stewards of your money. They are doing amazing work. They see kids on a daily basis, they connect families and kids with resources that are children, not the children of you, not your children, not my children. These are not the children that we are typically concerned with. It's the children from the society that is not participating and supporting their kids in school. And those are the kids that we get to meet and get to touch their lives before they have an opportunity to come in and do an act of violence that none of us could ever even consider happening to our children. And so please take a minute to look at this. If you have questions, I know Mr. Dodd, Mr. Mathias, and myself would love to talk to you about this three-quarter mileage and how important it is to our schools and to the safety and the security of our buildings and for our students' needs. And so thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve our students in the last eight years. I love this position. I love it. I love having an impact in Lake County Schools, and I can honestly say that I have a very vested interest in these kids as well. Thanks.
Thank you so much to each of our candidates tonight. It was not an easy position to be in, not knowing what you're gonna be asked. But you did a very great job. I hope Mr. Brandenburg won't mind my alluding to a, as a fellow old guy up here. I remember a famous debate of Ronald Reagan and Walter Mondale, I believe it was. And when Mr. Mondale pointed out Mr. Reagan's advanced age, Mr. Reagan responded with, "I refuse to hold my opponents relative youth and inexperience against them." That was the most powerful thing I've ever heard. Great job, everybody. I hope you don't want my pic on you, but I'm gonna shoot that. Just, uh, thank you.